And call this meeting the Oskaloosa City Council to order. Today is Tuesday, September 6, 2016. Let's start with the invocation by Reverend John Spiegel. Honored to have him here. He is also the person who officiated over my oldest son's wedding. He was back in town this weekend.
Yes, he was.
Yes, he was. Well, I'm privileged to share this word of prayer for our community and this council session this evening. And I invite that blessing upon us in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. Almighty and eternal God, you have revealed your glory to all nations. God of power and might, wisdom and justice, through you authority is rightly administered, laws enacted, and judgment decreed. Assist with your spirit of counsel and fortitude, our mayor, and the administration of our community. May they serve our community in honesty and in utility. Encourage due respect for virtue and right. May all seek the enactment of laws with justice and compassion. May all seek to restrain crime, vice, and immorality. Let the light of your divine wisdom direct the deliberation of this council session, and shine forth in all proceedings and laws framed for our rule and government. May all citizens seek to preserve peace and promote happiness, and continue to establish our national blessings of liberty and equality. I ask this prayer in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. Thank you.
Thanks, Father.
Thank you. Do join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our command, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Moore?
Here.
First egg?
Here.
Wally?
Yes.
Gates?
Here.
Burnett?
Yes.
College jury?
Jimenez?
Here.
Okay, thank you. Moving through the agenda, the next item is the opportunity for community comments. This item is reserved to receive comments from the community for concerns whether or not they're included on the current agenda. The community is encouraged to come and speak before the mayor and city council. We do ask that statements be brief. Brief is defined as being three minutes or less. Any questions that are to be asked of the city staff, the council members, or the mayor, we ask that they be asked prior to speaking to the full council, so that way we have a chance to properly research and perhaps answer those questions away from a full meeting. Comments are to be directed to the mayor and city council only. Is there anyone who would care to speak at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Whoop, I'm sorry. Please come to the microphone.
Hello. My name is Timothy Wright. Purchased a house over on 805 South B Street. I'm here tonight because I got a letter in the mail about weed assessment and grass mowing. It's done before I bought the property, so I just wanted to see. So it's cost of $250 on here. I just want to see maybe if there's any way possible I could waive that as I bought this house, and remodel, rebuild it, and fix it back up. So that's what I'm here for tonight.
Okay. Yep, and I believe this is on the agenda tonight as well.
Yeah, yeah.
And so why don't we go ahead and address that when we get to that item on the agenda? Is there anyone else who would care to speak? Okay, seeing none, I'll move on. Getting on to item number six. Is that right? Yep, item number five. This has to do with the consent agenda. These are items that are routine in nature, usually not very controversial. I did want to draw the council's attention to a few of them, though. Item E is to consider a resolution setting the date for a public hearing to amend Title 17, Chapter 17.08 of the Oskaloosa Municipal Code regarding sidewalk requirements. This is the result of a work session that took place while I was on vacation back on August 15. And it's my understanding that the council had a chance to talk it through at that time, and this is to set the hearing date for September 19 at 6:00, where that would be the first reading for a potential new ordinance. Item F, this is to, it's a resolution authorizing the Iowa Department of Transportation to do maintenance and repair of primary roads in the city of Oskaloosa. This is an agreement that comes up every five years, so it would be pretty much a repeat of what we signed five years ago. Item I is to consider a resolution amending Resolution 92671, and that's for the payment of filing fees municipal infractions without prior council approval. These would be payments that are due to the Mahaska County Treasurer, excuse me, Clerk of Court. And so in that item that I mentioned, that resolution from 1992, the clerk of court was not mentioned in that, so this would add to that. And then also item K. This is a resolution that authorizes the mayor and city clerk to get into an assignment request by Ironwood Partners LLC. That's a Section 42 apartment project on the southwest part of town. What it basically says is that we have a development agreement that says that when they pay their property taxes, we turn around and refund those property taxes back to them as part of their incentive to build. They have gotten a loan from a bank based upon that stream of payments, and so the bank is asking that the city of Oskaloosa recognize that, and then assign the payments that would ordinarily go to Ironwood, therefore go to the bank. There are some caveats that the city has put in there as well, saying, "We want you to understand that if Ironwood doesn't pay the property taxes, we don't owe the money to the bank." So anyway, that item is in there. Any comments or questions from the council?
I'd like to have E polled and agree with some.
Any others? Okay. So item E.
Slide one.
Yep. Is to consider a resolution setting the date of a public hearing to amend Title 17, Chapter 17.08 of the Oskaloosa Municipal Code pertaining to sidewalk requirements. And the explanation that we have is that their meeting on April 11, 2016, May 9 of 2016, June 7 of 2016, July 6 of 2016, and August 2 of 2016, Planning and Zoning Commission discussed possible sidewalk requirements for commercial and residential developments. The Planning and Zoning Commission is requesting the city council revise the city code for sidewalk requirements, and the new wording that they add is that a public sidewalk shall be required for the following. First and one, there's four itemized here. Number one is all new developments in all zoning districts. So if you have a new development that includes but not limited to projects requiring a site plan review, changes in property use type in all residential structures that are new. Item two is redevelopments, enlargements, or extensions of more than 25% of either the total property area or gross building area in all zoning districts except for the single-family, two-family, and duplex use types. Number three is all redevelopments, enlargements, or extensions of more than 50% of either the total property area or gross building area for a single-family, two-family, or duplex use type in all zoning districts. And number four, these requirements could be waived by the city council based on a recommendation after Planning and Zoning Commission review in general industrial and limited industrial zoning districts. And there's an item B here, all new and existing sidewalk required by this section has to be constructed or reconstructed in concrete and in compliance with current ADA accessibility and city specification standards. So this is an item setting the, the city council reviewed, discussed proposed amendments at their study session that was meeting at 5:00 PM on August 15, 2016. This item is just setting a public hearing.
The problem I have with this is it just creates more sidewalks to nowhere. We've got them all over town now. We don't ever get them completed unless the city does complete one like we did out by the Gulf, of course, of course. And this really punishes the people that live on a street with no sidewalks. So if you vote yes on this thing, I'm going to ask you people up here, and there's five of you that don't have sidewalks, to commit to putting sidewalks in front of your house. And Steve, I think you should start, because just to the east of you is sidewalks going to block, and around the corner on Highland. So I think you should take your corner lot and put sidewalks in, if you vote yes on this.
And Aaron, I will vote yes on this, and I'll be glad to do that if I add 50% to my structure, just like the proposal.
No, you don't have to add 50%. Just do it. That's all I'm asking. If you vote yes, if you think it's as important to have sidewalks to nowhere, then you should do it. I'm surprised you haven't done it by now.
I appreciate your opinion, Aaron.
Thank you.
Okay.
I just think it's ridiculous. It's one of the dumbest things we've ever had on this council since I've been on here in eleven and a half years. I'm serious about this. This is ridiculous.
Aaron, I'm sorry. My problem is, right now, I'd ask at the, at the last meeting we had about it, to have another work session, and try to get this resolved. But we went right into never setting a public hearing, and then we'll have the public hearing, so what I want to do is hold, back off a little bit, have another work session, and then move forward. I didn't pull it, he pulled it, but I was going to pull it, so.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments from the council members?
I'd agree with Mr. Wally. We need to have a work session to separate this out.
Okay.
And if I understand it right, all I can do now is to vote no now on the public hearing to get it restarted. Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
Well, yeah, because what I'm asking for is a motion to have the hearing. So if we have a motion to do that in a second, then we'll vote on it.
So move.
A motion.
Second.
Okay, you got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
So what are we voting on?
Whether or not to have a hearing.
No, wait. To have a.
This is the vote to have the hearing?
To have the hearing.
Okay.
And if we vote yes to have the hearing, that means we won't have a work session?
That's right.
Well, you can still have a work session.
Yeah, but you're still going to.
But you're, but what we're doing is scheduling the hearing. And so if there's the ability to have a work session prior to that, that's good, but the hearing gets locked in on that date.
Okay, so if we vote no, then that means this is dead till we have the work session, correct?
Well, there won't be a hearing, yeah.
That's right.
And it sounds like there's three people up there who want that.
First egg?
No.
Wally?
No.
Gates?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Jimenez?
No.
Moore?
Yes.
Okay, 3-3 tie carries over to the next meeting. Okay. Next item is I. Excuse me.
If it's going to carry over to the next meeting, then why can't we go ahead and have the work session?
Yeah, I don't see any reason why not.
Yeah, absolutely. We still have that.
Yep. Okay, next is item K. This item is a.
You got the rest of the consent to do on yet?
Yeah. What I'm doing is I'm pulling off the ones that appear to have some sort of controversy attached to them. Okay. Item K is to consider a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an assignment request by Ironwood Partners. The city council approved a development agreement for the reserves at Ironwood Apartment Complex on September 15 of 2014. That agreement spelled out specific rights, roles, and responsibilities between the parties, namely the city and Ironwood Partners, is available at the city clerk's office or online through the city's document archive center, which is Radix. The developer has recently presented the city with an assignment request, which if approved, would assign payments of future grants provided by the city to Horizon Bank instead of to the developer. Assignment requests are not atypical to receive, especially as developer continues to work on financing a project. However, it could create some complexities for recouping previous grants before a subsequent default, if that were to occur. The approved development agreement allows assignments upon written approval from both entities. Staff is inclined to recommend approval of the request with modifications that have been included in the revised assignment document, so there's no financial impact to the city anticipated. However, it does present the potential issues to the city for a clawback of grants already made if there were a subsequent default. We don't anticipate this to occur, but it is a potential issue with the request. And so, in there, I described earlier kind of what was going on with this. In the acknowledgement, there's a couple of sentences here, that the lender's rights to any economic development grant are contingent on the operation of the development agreement. So as to create an obligation on the city, so as to create an obligation on the city's part to fund an economic development grant, in no case will lender's rights be greater than the borrower's rights under development agreement. You know, namely, the city is not liable to the bank. Now, questions or comments?
Well, it just seems odd to me that, that this is coming up. We have not had that before, and I was just kind of wondering what kind of exposure we have with that going forward.
I would say we haven't had a development agreement of this nature on a Section 42 project, so I don't know for any housing development recently. So I'd say since I've been here, we haven't had this type of request. Again, assignments are not atypical. In this particular instance, the bank was essentially requesting that rather than the funds be sent to Ironwood Partners, who then turns around and sends them to the bank, that they would eliminate them as a middleman, and that the funding would go directly to the bank.
Does it leave Ironwood invincible? They're getting out, is what I'm.
No, no. And again, this is not an amendment to the development agreement, so that legal document, that binding agreement stays in place. Our legal counsel from Des Moines thought it creates complexities if we had to go back in the event of a default. Doesn't mean that we couldn't get the funding that would be owed to us via the development agreement. She just thought it could add complexities. So again, I'm inclined to recommend approval from my side based on what our attorney added in. That's what you see, stipulations one, two, and three. There was a fourth stipulation that we tried to get in there that would give us the clawback provision, but the bank wouldn't agree to it because they didn't want to be on the hook for the development agreement, essentially.
Exactly, and that, I guess that's why I brought that up, that I don't. Why is the bank requesting this to start with? I mean, outside of just eliminate them as a middleman on the, on the thing, but, you know, if they had their financing in place and everything was on the, you know, straight up with that, then there shouldn't be any question that that would happen anyway.
Again, I don't necessarily think this is a, this isn't, shouldn't necessarily be an opportunity for us to view the project in a lower manner or a lesser manner. I think refinancing or changing financing or assignments occurs in bigger projects. We're not the only community that they've requested this of. Tonight, the city of Washington is actually taking action on a similar request. I don't know if they have the same provisions. I believe they're just acknowledging it without the additional stipulations that we've put in there. And their administrator said he expects a quick resolution to it. They'll approve it. They don't see any issues with it. But that's just for reference.
I was, it caught my attention when the word inclined was used, and I was assuming it's you, Michael, but you're using word definitely then, so I thought, well, Mike's hesitant, you know, maybe I need to be hesitant. I just, it's a little above my pay grade. I'm just concerned, and there is concern in the community, I do not want to see that project lower its standards like it would happen south of town. And this probably doesn't have anything to do with that, you'll say, but I'm, I'm just telling you what I'm thinking, so.
Okay. Okay. So I think we're okay on that. I think what I'll do is I'll include that with the rest of the consent agenda. If you have a motion to vote on the rest of the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Wally?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
First egg?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Takes us to item six. This is the various openings and vacancies that we have on various boards and commissions here in the city of Oskaloosa. They're, we've got, yeah, we've got six of them here. First is the Airport Commission, one vacancy to fill upon appointment for an unexpired term ending on December 31 of 2021. One vacancy for a six-year term beginning on January 1 of 2017 and ending on December 31 of 2022. It's a five-member board, typically meets on the first Monday of the month. Four males and no females currently serving, one vacancy. Historic Preservation Commission, we have five vacancies. One to fill upon appointment for a term ending on December 31 of 2018. Two vacancies for three-year terms beginning on January 1 of 2017 and ending on December 31 of 2019. And two vacancies for alternate members. It's a seven-member board, two alternate members that meet as needed, four males and two females currently serving with three vacancies, and two of those are for alternate members. The Mahaska County Solid Waste Management Commission and Ad Hoc Recycling Committee, there's five vacancies to fill for one-year terms that begin on January 1 of 2017 and end on December 31 of 2017. The city of Oskaloosa has allowed five representatives on the commission. Two of the representatives are also appointed to the Ad Hoc Recycling Committee. Currently, we have two males and one female serving, two vacancies. Municipal Housing Agency, one vacancy to fill upon appointment for an unexpired term ending on February 28 of 2017. It's a five-member board, meets quarterly, two males and two females currently serving with one vacancy. The Housing Trust Fund Committee, we have one vacancy to fill upon appointment for an unexpired term ending on January 31 of 2017. Five at-large members serve on the committee that meets every month, two males and two females currently serving at large with one vacancy. And finally, the Planning and Zoning Commission, there's one vacancy to fill upon appointment for an unexpired term ending on just April 30 of 2020. It's a seven-member board, typically meeting once a month. We have four males and two females currently serving, and one vacancy on that. Getting into our, the regular agenda here, item A is a public hearing to consider a resolution levying a special assessment against private property for cutting and removal of weeds by the city of Oskaloosa in accordance with Title 8, Chapter 8.20 of the city code of the city of Oskaloosa. This is the time for the public hearing on levying that special assessment against private property for weed cutting outlined in Exhibit A. We've got, let's see, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. Got 10 properties listed here. Certified notices were sent to each property owner, notice published in the Oskaloosa Herald, and if approved, the property owner has 30 days to pay for the weed cutting in the city clerk's office. And then after 30 days, it gets assessed to the property taxes with a payment schedule of one year at 9% interest. And so I'll open the public hearing at this time. Is there anyone who would care to speak? And yes, sir, if you want to reiterate or say anything in addition to what you already have, you're entitled to do so. We also have another gentleman here who would like to speak as well, so. Okay, very good.
Like I said before, my name's Timothy Wright. Bought this property at 805 South B Street. These weed assessments were, were put on this before I bought this property. I've since been over there, mowed it a couple times, and we're in the process of working rehab in that place, so. What I'm here tonight for is I want to see if I can get a waiver of this cost originally, since I didn't own it at that time. And since I took ownership of it, I guarantee you, there's not going to be any more issues of the city coming up and mowing it. So that's, the thing caught my attention, is 9% added on, this 250 bucks. I mean, I've got enough, my hands full fixing that old house up, so I just kind of like to see it waived, you know, of the 250 cost. I mean, I know you guys went and mowed it, but that was before my time owned, and that's so.
Yeah.
So that's all I'm asking.
Okay, appreciate that.
When, when did you purchase it, Mr. Wright?
Uh, let's see.
Just for my, I want to write it down if I can.
I think it was after June 24, I think. I talked to Mr. Dixon, gave him a repair plan on it. I don't got that paper in front of me right now, but it's.
End of June, roughly.
What's that?
End of June, sometime later.
Yeah, I was in the June.
Mowed in May.
So is that something that you see when you purchase a property, that there's a lien on, or is this, there's not a lien on at this time, I take it, or whatever? So he would not have seen this cost there, or not, when he purchased the property?
No, there's no lien at, at this present time. However, we do encourage all the real estate agents to contact us before a closing to ensure that they know what's on the property, because until the council certifies all of this, and then we send it over to the county, it doesn't actually show up with the property.
Okay.
In this instance, there had been a lot of communication back and forth about this property because it was on our list for lots condemned. So we've been trying to figure out what we were going to do with it, as far as demo or not. Mr. Wright submitted a redevelopment plan, and I don't have my notes with me either on this particular property, but I believe there was some discussion about the amount of assessments that we had on this property, and being able to use that as leverage with the former owner and his purchase price. So I don't know if that was rolled into that or not.
I've seen that, neither.
I, I think they are on there, because when I did the research on it, there were some other assessments. I just wondered about this new one being stuck on there, too. It's just, that'd be another bill I have to pay, and then, you know, so. The original owner that had it before me, of course, they didn't lift a finger or do anything with it, so, I mean, you guys have been, I don't know how many times you guys have been up there to mow it, but I'm just saying, there won't be any additional mowing as long as it's under my hands, so. But this 250 bucks, I kind of wanted to wait, have that waived. I feel I'm entitled at least one reprieve or one, you know, ask for that to be waived, I guess, so.
So we've got a property that we were getting close to condemn that Mr. Wright's going to fix up, and we'll have the property that's.
On the tax roll.
On the tax roll.
Going forward.
And that would be correct, by the way. Mr. Wright and I had visited on the phone several times about it. He got to us a very detailed list with the various steps he was going to be taking on the property, the dates he was going to be doing such.
Correct.
The city, we had previously had an order entered for the evading of nuisance here, and we have agreed that we would go ahead and, if you take all those steps, that we would waive any penalty on that in connection with the judgment entered.
Correct.
In connection with those. Although with that, we've not specifically discussed, obviously, this one.
Correct, yeah.
Any idea what the timeframe was? What's the time? Do you remember?
For the total repairs?
Yeah.
Six, six months.
Yeah.
From the date of purchase, which we've been starting on it. Doesn't look like a lot of progress has been done other than cleaning up the property, but it's, it's.
We mowed in May, and he bought it in June, so he, he's not, I mean, it's the previous person, and we don't, probably are going to get that.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. I mean, I've got enough bills, other stuff that's tied up to it, that, you know, I was aware of that when I took it, but every time I get a notice in the paper, or in the mail or something for some property I've got, then I just, you know, make sure to stay on top of it, but, so. That's all I was asking. I don't want to pay additional 250 bucks. That's, I mean, it's up to you guys to say yea or nay, but that's, that's what I'm here for.
Okay. Okay. It's the, the normal protocol, where we will hear if anyone has any objections to the list that we have, and then I'll close the hearing, and then we'll have the council members agree whether or not they want to strike any names off, so. So thank you very much.
Okay.
Hello, my name's Rick Watts. I've got really an identical situation. This addresses 703 C Avenue West, which I purchased the first or second week of July, and it was mowed on 516, 2016, and you're looking at assessing $250 towards the property. Personally, I absolutely understand the basis of Chapter 8, Section 20, whether or not it costs $250 to mow the property or not, you know. I, I think it's incremental. I think every time there's a violation, it goes up in cost somewhat. And certainly the purpose of that is probably punitive and probably to deter, you know, conduct or lack of conduct, I guess, in mowing the lawn. But again, this happened before my time, and I've got somebody hired and it's mowed every week now for 10 bucks a week. So, again, I'm just asking that, because I didn't own the property yet, and because really the fact that it wasn't mowed was no fault of mine, when I purchased the property, some taxes had been purchased, and there'd already been some lawn assessments against the property. They'd already been assessed, so obviously I was responsible for those. But this is one that kind of fell in the cracks there between, I guess, the last time there was an assessment made and when I purchased it. So, again, you're not going to have a problem with it not being mowed, and to the extent that this $250, I guess, is to punish or to deter future conduct in not mowing that lawn, you don't have to worry about that, because there may, arrangements have been made. So, my argument, I guess, is essentially that of the previous gentleman, there's plenty of work to be done on this property, and that $250 certainly could be spent on something different, I guess, than paying the previous owner's bill for not taking care of his lawn. That's all I've got.
When you purchased the property, did you work through a realty firm, or, or was it something you did privately?
Yeah, it was listed through a realtor, I didn't have a realtor. It was, it's a pretty distressed piece of property, and again, it's going to take some substantial rehab...
Okay.
To get it fixed back up. So, you know, she was representing the seller, I didn't have a broker, I was just kind of representing myself, and, and I checked and was aware of what the assessments were at that time, and the fact some of the taxes had been purchased, and there'd been some assessments for the lawn and some other problems that, obviously, I took on when I purchased the property. But again, this is a new one, and it was, predated my purchase, but it was subsequent, I guess, to the last round of assessments, so. Again, I certainly could use that 250 bucks on something else, if you see fit to waive it in this instance, so, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would care to speak? Okay, seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Yeah, does, does anyone care to make a motion regarding the weed cutting assessment list?
I'll make a motion, and we waive the two that requested it.
Okay, so the one listed for, I guess I'll, I'll list the owners that are here, so. Timothy McManus, which would be the second line?
Yes.
And then Darilla Bartlow, which would be second, third from the bottom?
Yes.
Okay.
Waive those two.
I'll second.
Okay, we've got a second there.
I'm sorry, what was the second one?
That would be yours. Or, excuse me, it would be yours and the gentleman here. Okay, any discussion from the council members? Got a question for the city manager, though. Do we encourage the realtors in town to check with us on this sort of thing?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Roll call, please.
Yates?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Versteg?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Okay, that passes with the waiver of the two. Moving on, Item B. Consider an ordinance approving a parking restriction along North 7th Street. It's an S curve between J Avenue East and F Avenue East, this is the second reading. In the explanation, due to resident visibility and safety concerns along the North 7th Street S curve between J Avenue East and F Avenue East, staff has been directed to perform a study regarding the on-street parking in that area. Currently, no parking restrictions exist along this section of North 7th Street. This section of North 7th is 30 feet wide. It does not allow for two-way traffic if vehicles are parked on both sides of the street. Therefore, visibility and travel lane width are limited, especially along the S curve when vehicles are parked on both sides of the street. After visiting the site, staff recommends restricting parking along the east side of the street due to an existing fire hydrant and retaining wall along that side of North 7th. And there's a parking restriction map that's included in the packet. In the past three years, there have been no crashes along this section of North 7th Street. Although not a part of the traffic engineering analysis for parking studies, the survey responses from property owners are attached separately. And so, the recommended, recommended action is the approval of the ordinance authorizing a parking restriction along North 7th Street as presented on the east side. Do we have a motion supporting that?
Move second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Burnett?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Versteg?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item C, this is to consider an ordinance amending Oskaloosa Municipal Code Section 5.04.360 and 5.04.370, this is the first reading. Currently, Oskaloosa Municipal Code Sections 5.04.360 and 5.04.370 provide exemptions for public consumption and possession of alcohol without a liquor control license within Edmondson Park, with some limitations. A request has been made of city, to city staff by organizers of the alley project to expand the exemption by including 250 feet of the east-west alley located between 109 South Market Street and 115 South Market Street, within the exempted locations of the city's ordinance. If this change is made, the public can legally consume and carry open containers within the public space without the requirement of a person or organization obtaining a valid liquor control license. Presently, the Oskaloosa Area Chamber and Development Group holds a valid liquor control license for this area. If the city council adopts this ordinance modification, OACDG can eliminate its current liquor license for the area. So, 5.04.360 is written out, and it, let's see, basically says, yeah, I'll read it out. Except as otherwise provided herein, it's unlawful for any person to use, possess, or consume any alcoholic beverage upon public streets or highways, or any place open to the public except premises covered by a liquor control license, or to possess or consume any alcoholic beverage on any public school property, or while attending any public or private school-related function. Further, no person shall be intoxicated, nor simulate intoxication in any place open to the public. As used in this section and the following section, premises covered by a liquor control license shall mean that the location where alcoholic beverages are served. In addition, beer or wine from cans and bottles, but not keg beer, may be assumed in the east-west alley measuring approximately 250 feet in length between 109 South Market Street and 115 South Market Street. That's the new addition. And Edmondson Park, except that no alcoholic beverage shall be consumed within 50 feet of the swimming pool and parking area, Babe Ruth Baseball Diamond and Parking Lot, and any playground equipment, including but not limited to the wooden playground and parking lot. 5.04.370, open container in public places prohibited, says that except as otherwise provided herein, it's unlawful for any person to possess an open container of an alcoholic beverage upon the public streets or highways, or any place open to the public except premises covered by a liquor control license. Persons may possess, this is where it gets new again, persons may possess open containers of beer or wine, but not keg beer, in the east-west alley measuring approximately 250 feet in length between 109 South Market Street and 115 South Market Street, and then going on Edmondson Park, except no person shall possess an open container of beer or wine within 50 feet of the swimming pool and parking area. Likewise, Babe Ruth Baseball Diamond and Parking Lot, and any playground equipment, including but not limited to the wooden playground and parking lot. So, a lot of verbiage for probably a short vote. Do we have a motion supporting this? Okay, any discussion?
The only thing I question I'm for, but we're doing the whole alley, so now we've got a half an alley that isn't part of the new alley, and you're saying anybody can be back in there drinking, but open container.
I'm unclear, okay, which half alley are you talking about?
Well, the alley only goes to the halfway so far. The drawing we have shows it going clear to the mall door. So, you've got, you've got another, which is another half a block, an alley. There's garbage cans back there, and air conditioners, and, see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, now, so now you've got, you know who, back there. Open container, he's legal, he or she's legal.
Yeah, if he goes from the, the area with the tables and chairs further west.
Well, he can go up there, there's two other entrances into there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The two entrances aren't part of this, though. You're talking the north-south?
Yeah. No, but if he got in there, he's legal. How he got in there might not be legal, but you're saying, Aaron, yeah, how he walked in there.
Ma'am, it sounds like you've got a comment, would you come to the podium, please?
My question is, would that liquor license cover that alleyway as long as it's an open alley project? Because if you amended now, it would leave that covered by a, a license as long as it's an alleyway. So, as long as that project is open, that would cover it as being open to people being able to drink in there? Or is it, is it as long as that is an alleyway project, as long as it's an ongoing, active thing that we have in the alleyway?
Well, I think what the ordinance modification is saying is that there would be no liquor license required for this area.
But that's what I'm saying, when it becomes...
She's got a good point.
When it becomes no longer a project that, that people are participating in, if that alleyway were to move to a different position, people would still be allowed in that alleyway to drink.
Right, without a change in ordinance accordingly, yes.
Right. Or what about 4:00, 4:00 AM in the morning?
Right, would there be a time limit on that?
As, as we have in...
Edmondson Park, there's no... Yeah, as it's worded, no.
I mean, obviously, you would still have restrictions if somebody's being loud and rowdy, the police could pick somebody up for disturbing the peace or something like that, but in its present format, there are no time restrictions.
Edmondson's got hours, right?
Pardon?
Edmondson has hours.
Hours of operation, yeah.
Okay, ma'am?
Sherry?
I am Sherry. I am the S in Alley Cat. We are talking about the rules that are posted in the alley, and we do actually set 5 to 10 as our alcohol allowance, and the, the lights, the zigzag lights that we have in there are set on a timer, and they do go off. So, we actually do have posted hours for the alley. It would not be included in your ordinance, but it is posted in the alley, and we do have the lights going on and off to, to try to keep people out of there after that time. And the, going all the way to the end was also definitely to prevent, because long-term, we are also going to do some, some things in the back as well, but right now, we're just using the front, and we would be content with that for now as well. Okay?
Having hours posted would not prevent somebody drinking up there for midnight or 4 o'clock in the morning.
Yeah, likewise with the operation of Edmondson Park. If somebody's knocked in.
Right.
Get 11 in it, hopefully.
Mayor Council, Edmondson Park, within the code itself, there, there are hours posted for the, for the facility.
Yeah, that's why it's covered, you can't be in there.
When, when we looked at this, just, so, when we first heard this request, we talked about the possibility of including this space as a park for that exact issue. Can't recall why, why we didn't roll that way, but I think the idea was that we wanted to maintain it as an open area. So, it could be added, but we'd want to study the implications of that and then get back to you in writing before you took action on, on any, any item like that. So, you could add hours.
So, not in this ordinance that I see here about Edmondson Park, but somewhere in the code, it talks about the, the Edmondson Park being open, or parks being open?
Parks.
Okay, gotcha.
Park hours, yeah.
Got you.
Yes, Jake.
What was your comment on that?
No, okay.
Should we include hours on it?
We should.
I think we should post hours on it.
You know, that, that would be, obviously, the other thing we could do now, too. I think it's close enough, it would not require reposting, that we could amend this to plug in some hours on this at this point in time.
I wonder if we shouldn't.
I think we should.
Okay, okay. And it sounds like that wouldn't be opposed by the, the folks with this project?
It would not.
Okay. And the hours you have posted now, Sherry, or what?
The hours that we have posted now are from, the alcohol is permitted from 5 to 10 PM.
What about weekends?
But we would match Edmondson as fine as well.
Weekends? Like a Saturday afternoon thing, or, I'm just asking?
Well, it says exactly the way we have it worded, is wine and beer, no kegs, is permitted from 5 to 10, any exceptions approved by us, by the alley committee. So, I mean, we would, obviously, we would abide by whatever your ordinance is, so. Weekend maybe, there would definitely be some event requests on the weekend, so it might be an all-day thing on a Saturday if we had an event.
You can have beer at Edmondson on Sunday, as far as I know. Yeah.
Yes, if we put, if we put 5 to 10 in here, then that would eliminate that option, so we need, we need to think about how we, how we write that if we want to allow weekends or more flexibility.
Events, right. Right now, we do have events.
Could we reference the operation that's going on in Edmondson? So, we stay silent on hours of operation on this and reference Edmondson Park, that this would match?
I would think we could incorporate that by reference. It's a little more cumbersome grammatically, obviously, but I think that can be done.
What, what are the hours at Edmondson? I don't know what they are.
I don't read, I just wrote that hours.
Edmondson closes at 11, they're just closing from 11 PM to 6 AM.
Okay.
Thanks, Jake.
So, alcohol's allowed at Edmondson seven days a week, from 6 AM to 11 PM on our current code? Seven days a week?
Yes.
Okay. I want to clarify. Anything else, Sherry?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Wendell?
This is completely off the topic of why I was here today, but it did bring up, there's another event that I'm responsible for purchasing liquor license for, is my understanding of this, that it would be basically carrying liquor, not liquor sales, because liquor sales would still require a liquor permit to be purchased through the city.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
So, this would just be a, basically like a BYOB event, where they could bring their own in during these operations?
Correct. Okay. So, we have a motion and a second for, for approval as is, but we also have the desire to match the operating hours, I think, of Edmondson Park. So, for the folks who did the motion and second, would you accept an amendment to reference the hours of Edmondson Park?
Yes, I would.
Okay. Who was the, who was the second?
I think I was.
Oh, Moore.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's okay with you. Okay. So, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Versteg?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item A, this gets into a report on items from city staff. City manager, I think we've got the discussion of a rental inspection program FAQ sheet?
Yes, sir. As I noted for you in an email last week, it did include the FAQ sheet for the public's viewing. I also had this uploaded on the city's Facebook page, and I think we've put it on the newsflash yet, I think we were going to do that this week. So, the idea is that this would capture the questions that were raised during the most recent study session on the rental inspection program, as well as some additional comments or questions that we received after the fact or beforehand. So, it's probably the most comprehensive list of Q and A that we've been able to put together based on feedback from the community and you as council. So, we promised we'd get that out, there it is. If you have questions or comments, let me know, I'd be happy to. This is kind of a living document, so if things get added, we can, we can modify this document, is basically what I'm saying.
I do have a comment on this.
Okay.
Number 19, it says, no, the inspection does not include an inspection of lead vest paint, lead base paint. I really think it should, if you're going to have this at all. That's a killer of young kids. I should, I guess I should say, you have to chill.
I can't really know what you're talking about. In that comment, or that, that input probably aligns up nicely with the discussion of what are the next steps. Andrew handed out a document, placed it in front of you before the meeting. I think we, as staff, are looking for concurrence on a date to, to at least continue the discussions. continue the discussions. And as I, as I proposed to you, we would like to sit down in a study session of city council and staff and go page by page by, through the administrative policy, to see if there's concurrence on that. It also would be a great opportunity for us to ask you any policy questions that we need direction on. And so that's something that we're still working on. And it'll fit into exactly what Councilmember Versteg pointed out, you know, should we do this? Yes or no? Should we do, should we include that? You know, should we, I'm trying to think of one that we regularly ask.
There's the discussion of the 60-minute service. We address that. Give us feedback.
Right. So we would phrase those questions for you to be able to give us some direction, and then that would help us finalize the document, or at least get it in a final draft or final version. So, question for you tonight is, would you like to discuss when that study session would occur? Presumably, that would happen during September, but that's up to everybody here in whether or not you feel that's an appropriate timetable. You know, we could push that to October if need be. But I guess I'm looking for, for your feedback.
Okay, just so I'm clear, you don't want any comments tonight. Just setting this date, which I agree with. I mean, okay, the only thing is, I want to get to it, but we keep putting this firm on the end, and we don't know if we're going to get there that fast, but it's okay. That can move, like Mike said, fluid, so, okay.
I think Councilmember Walling will take your comments at any time. I think that's an important part of us being able to, to hear what you have to say, and if there are questions that need further exploration.
That's what the work session's for. Oh, yeah.
So I'd like to see what the appetite of the council is to have that work session in September. I'm seeing head nods, yes.
Not at all, actually, but that's fine.
I don't want to rush it in between before a meeting, though. We need plenty of time.
Okay, so.
That's my two cents.
You don't want to rush it before a meeting?
Counsel, yeah. I don't want you to hold it at 5:00, and it has to be up here at 6:00. Unless you want to wait until later, and that gets old, so.
Yep. Yep. Okay, so, let's see, today's the 6th, and then there's a 24-hour notice for a meeting. How about, I'll throw some dates out there. What do we got going on? September 12th?
What day is that?
It's a Monday.
I won't be here for that.
Okay. How about the 13th? Okay, 13th, 5:00? 30?
Yeah.
Wait, are we making 5:00 work or 5:30 work?
It doesn't matter. If we have the 13th, I'll figure it out.
Okay. Why don't we shoot for 5:00, then?
On the 13th.
And from the logistics standpoint, would you like to hold it at the library, or do we need to hold it at a larger venue? Of course, the first study session, no one showed up to.
Yeah.
So I thought we were, we're in the clear to be able to have that, that meeting at the library. The capacity's 80 to 100 people. Do you think there'll be that many people that show up again? I guess that's the question.
We could have it there. What, does it hurt? And then if they show up, there'll be room. Doesn't matter to us if we meet there or here.
Okay. Yeah, I guess, where would the next larger venue be?
We'll have to track something down.
Yeah, yeah. I'd, I'd say let's go ahead with city-owned facility, library.
Okay, so with that in mind, just kind of rolling through the rest of it, you can see that the timeline just makes a lot of assumptions, and these dates may change, could change. One of the things that I do want to point out is that originally, when we talked about this, there'd be an effective date of January 2017. That's still the intent here, is that the codes would be adopted by January 2017. At least, this is how we're pitching it. But the actual registration process wouldn't start until July. So there'd be, again, would be a six-month window, five, six-month window, where we're training staff, we're getting all the administrative processes and controls in place to ensure that the program goes off as smoothly as we can hope it to go off. Obviously, there will be hiccups here and there if it's approved, but that should give us enough time to get where we need to be, and everybody will. So, that might be a little different than what you were thinking before. So that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Anything from the city clerk's office?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything from the city attorney?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay. And moving on then. City council members. Erin?
No thanks.
Scotty?
No thanks.
Tom?
I'm not sure if I'm on a emergency management or 911, but we did have a meeting Thursday, plus Thursday. And it was well-attended. It's probably the best, we only were one short. I think they are improving. I think it's a learning curve. We did talk about, we need a packet at least 48 hours before we meet. They kind of throw it all out at you at the meeting and then expect you to vote on it. And I was the one that said it, but there were several people agreed. And Jamie Robinson also agreed to send out the preliminary minutes after we're done, stamp them preliminary, and then we, of course, we vote on them, just like everybody else does at the next meeting, but he would send those out so everybody would have it, so you can come prepared. And it seemed really receptive to it.
Okay. Does the rest of the agenda get to you before the meeting, or is it, is it, is it?
Barely. Yeah, so, but that's what, you know, he committed to doing it at least 48 hours ahead and have that for discussion. I mean, I went on the website, and it wasn't there yet. So, you know, it was that kind of thing.
Okay. As far as we know, are there any notice requirements for this organization?
They'd have the same posting requirements as other governmental bodies at 24 hours.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, so it sounds like Jamie may or may not be aware of that.
Well, I think, I think he is now. I mean, I mean, I think, yeah, so it's improving. There was a problem in the Herald today in the story. It mentioned, there was some money that had to be taken from a different fund, and the word "city" was used. Well, there was nothing about city budget in this, okay? It was two funds and the 911 that, where they were deciding where to take the money from. And I think they called the Herald, the Herald called me, and I don't know if they're going to do anything about it. I don't, I don't think it's a real big deal, but if you see the word "city," that's not right.
All good? Okay, sounds good. And I don't have anything to add. I did want to say a special thank you to Doug Yates. I thought he did a fine job as mayor pro tem when I was gone, out of town on vacation. Boy, I always feel like it's in really good hands whenever he grabs the gavel. So, I've offered him over and over.
It is your opinion, David.
Yeah. Aaron made sure I knew how poorly of a job I did. He was quick with his feedback.
Well, it, it's always a good feeling to know it's in good hands when I'm gone. So, try not to make that happen very often, but I was, I was very pleased with what I was seeing. We do have a loose end hanging out there as far as a requested work session regarding sidewalks. And so I imagine the city manager will be in contact with us via email to come up with when that can happen. And so with that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.